And over here on the back, we work on trick words. We have here and here, bury and out, and then we apply the rules that we're learning in a sentence. So over here, you can see that they're labeling bike and home and their magic E words in there, and then a cute little picture at the end to illustrate. Down here, we can see Evan over here is reading some decodable text. We have, he's working on the magic E where it's the title of snake and ape. And then over here, we're working on consonant L-E where Benjamin is finding all of the words in there, highlighting them. I tell them they're like college students with a highlighter over there studying and finding all those words. They really love doing that. And that is our phonics. Oh, I forgot to talk about Hegarty. Will you go back?
Yeah, I went off script.
Hegarty is a tool that brings in yet another element of phonemic awareness. They are auditory mini lessons that focus on students manipulating sounds in the words. The ARC curriculum has a variety of culturally diverse read-alouds and leveled readers that provide differentiated reading instruction. Teachers use the toolkit provided to help guide instruction within each of the levels. The ERLA assessment, which we just heard about earlier, provides diagnostic information on each student, so it differentiates within each reading level by identifying specific skills that each student needs to work on within that level. Each of these programs bring a different approach that complement each other. Last year, all teachers received foundations training. We all began ARC this year, and OG is currently being offered to teachers by the district for summer or during the school year training. Five years ago, I received the district-wide two-year OG training. Implementing all of these strategies enables all of our students to flourish and grow into successful readers.
I find school vision very educational. Every time somebody turns on the test, I go in the other room and re-look, and that's literally true. Ultimately, this is the attitude we want for all of our kids to have, to be like book lovers. My name is Andrew Profit. I'm an intervention teacher at Faith. Over the last year, I've been able to attend intensive Orton-Gillingham training, as well as participate in the implementation of the ARC Literacy Lab and Informational Research Lab. In our grade band, students began to make a shift from learning to read to reading to learn, and there has been a lot of success from many kids at Faith. In the general education Tier One classroom, all students in Grade Three are receiving structured phonics instruction through Wilson's fundations. The program allows students that need decoding skills to receive daily instruction in a manner that has been shown through science of reading research as effective for all students. So all of them are getting it, but the ones that really need it are getting extra. Additionally, the ARC program, Literacy Lab, also establishes a true reading workshop structure in the Tier One classroom, which has been fantastic for us as intervention teachers. It has students working on reading, writing, word work, vocabulary, while teachers are able to do small groups. It's allowed us to infuse that OG training into the work that we are doing through ARC. It's also allowed teachers to have conferences with every kid every week, which has been a huge shift for us. I also love that kids have to read independently every day. When I was a good grade teacher, that was a big push for me. I loved it. As an intervention teacher, I've been able to customize the ARC program by combining my newly acquired knowledge of the science of reading and small group lessons provided by ARC. I've been able to incorporate multisensory, individualized systemic instruction that allowed several of my students to actually exit EIB and ultimately have had several students that no longer need tiered interventions at all. The ARC program also has a universal screener, which we've talked about, called the ERLA, and this has allowed us to pick up students that we might have missed previously in Grades Four and Five that have phonics holes because we were not screening in that way before. Through the purposeful adoption and customization, we've also been able to effectively incorporate our ARC unit with our IB program of inquiry. Students have been actively engaged in inquiry throughout the adoption process this year, but this is especially true with the research lab. Our students in Third Grade inquired into marine life, our Fourth Graders inquired into ecosystems, and our Fifth Graders inquired into the civil rights movement. Students were given agency over the topics that they researched within each of those bigger ideas, and ultimately became experts in their individual subjects. I spent a lot of time becoming an expert on the tundra when I was working with Fourth Graders, so I know a lot, more than I thought I would. The ARC instruction also around research set our Fifth Graders up to be successful for exhibition because it introduced them to some structures to take notes, how to research, how to find information. And so our Fifth Graders did their research lab last term, and now they're in their exhibition for this term. So that's very important. As I close, the ARC implementation has been an opportunity for teachers and students to engage in authentic reading and research experiences. However, the most essential piece of any adoption is teacher training and knowledge. I'm truly lucky to have participated in the OG training and ARC adoption at the same time because I have a much better understanding of how the ARC program works and how I can customize it for my kids.
So on that note, we've been stronger together, and it's been evident in the presentations that our teachers shared today, evident in the celebrations that I shared today. And if it wasn't for our board, we wouldn't be here to have this celebration. Board members, thank you so much for your support and your passion. Good evening.
Thank you, Courtney. Questions or clarification from the board? I don't know if the coaches also want to participate.
Just one. I had a question about the dyslexia thing. I know that we're doing research on it now. I was wondering if we had a timeline or a window when that might be done, and those recommendations may come forward or decision-based.
Yeah, 2024 is the point that has to be implemented. So we're working towards, so we have already met the requirements that are before. So we are already making that an important investment. And we are already looking ahead to what can we do for students in secondary that may have been missed. And interventions, so that's where we are right now. Of course, you know, we continue to do the improvement and all that. So we actually are already meeting currently the requirements that are.
So to make sure that I understand, we're doing everything we need to do for the early learners, and we're actually going back and trying to address what we may have missed for learners before we were doing it beyond even what the standards are that Georgia's requiring?
Very essentially beyond what is required for early learners. What is required for early learners. Identify some students. These screen all students. We do an ERLA screener, we do the ERLA screener, and we do MAPS. And we do, you know, secondary screens for students that are black, that they are maybe a certain. And then we do the third screener. We are already, we are screening all students above the requirement, and you know, then we're going to be.
Could you repeat one more time, Dr. Bean, what the screener tests are? Did you say it's ERLA and MAPS, just so that people are clear?
Yes.
And when those are given?
Mm-hmm. So our three universal screeners that we give three times a year are the ERLA, which goes along with ARC, and that stands for the Independent Reading Level Assessment. And it's based on skills. A lot of times when people hear reading levels, they think about fluency and the difficulty of reading, but the ARC levels are based on like the skills that the students learn through phonemic awareness. So, you know, becoming better readers, the skills that we would expect them to have. So we do the ERLA three times a year. ERLA is actually done through conferencing, so it should actually be done with some students that are struggling readers twice, two times a. Every other week, sorry, so two times a month. But required for all students is three times a year. That's when we pull the data. We do MAPS three times a year, twice a year, three times a year at K-2, and then twice a year, third through eighth. And then that's ERLA, just the other screener that we give all students.
Could you speak to some people's criticism of ARC that it's related to guessing, or there's these pictures that are attached, or it's kind of more of a, it's kind of more of a coding as opposed to kids really putting sounds together and then being able to put words into context, carry that context along, and then read outside of the book that they're getting in their book box? Is there, can you kind of explain maybe how the teachers can get past that?
Absolutely. So everything that we're doing in foundations is all phonics-based, and that's carried over into ARC. So when the students are in, there are small strategy groups. Everything is a strategy group. So the strategy group goes from the scope and sequence of all, you know, phonics skills. So when students are asked to read, they are, when you first pick up a book, the first time you've ever picked up a book, of course, you're going to look at the pictures because you're a two- or three-year-old, right? So that's something, you've got to come with something. So of course, we want our students to get familiar with what a book looks like and those types of things if they're read-to-me students. However, when we are giving the instruction to the students, we're following the scope and sequence of a phonics. So when the students are reading, they are looking at the first letter of the word, and they're sounding out the word. We do not encourage students to look at pictures to find out what the story is about. We do not encourage students to. When we're analyzing students' reading, we're looking at the skills that they have attained. If you remember, one of the pictures was like a staircase from the ERLA. Each one of those staircases, it comes under a color. If you remember the colors, under each of those colors is a skill. So it could be beginning sound, it could be blend, it could be digraph, it could be vowel team. Each of those color levels represents a different skill set. So when the teachers are working with the students individually, one-on-one, small groups, it's all about the skill. So we are not teaching students to look at pictures. We're not teaching students to, you know, the meaning and all that kind of stuff, you know, trying to get meaning from the pictures to read the book. That's not how ARC, that's not how ARC fits the Orton-Gillingham methodology, which is what we're asking our teachers to do. And I think that's also important to remember that ARC is a lot. We teach science of social studies through the lens of literacy. And so the ARC units are what we are using to embed our expeditions through EL and our ID units in inquiry. We're an inquiry-based district. And so, you know, that's also important. And that's the content, that's the research, that's that thinking, that critical thinking, and that transformative form of literacy that we're asking our students to do. But of course, they have to be able to decode the words fluently in order to understand what they're reading. So that's where the teaching reading comes in, and that's, it's two separate things that enhance one another, as one of our representatives said. So, but every student K-2 has, K-3, I'm sorry, has structured phonics through foundations every day, and then the ERLA small group, which is also, you know, phonics, which is the small group phonics. And if there's students, to continue with what you were saying, Dr. Bean, if there's students beyond Third Grade that continue to have a gap in their phonics instruction decoding, we also have JES Word, which is also a Wilson product that we use for our students to continue the phonics instruction for students beyond Third Grade.
Dr. Howard, do you know why there's this conception about pictures guessing and things like that? Like where that comes from?
Well, I do know that previous, you know, you know how everything kind of goes in a circle? And I do know that many years ago, that was a way to teach. And that was best practices before we learned all about the science of reading. And so it's probably maybe people that are still hanging on to something, and that's most likely where it's coming from. But as our district is moving past that, like we are, we're using science to guide us in our instruction, and us as district reading coaches are making sure that any curriculum that we adopt, if we find that we need to supplement with like, say, foundations, which is a Tier One phonics program, we're doing that. We're making sure that we have Hegarty, which brings in the phonemic awareness aspect, which happens before phonics, which the phonemic awareness is hearing sounds and what do I hear? And then we move to the decoding and those types of things. And then we move past Third Grade, then we focus more on the comprehension. But they have to learn how to read before we can kind of get there. So why somebody might be holding on to that, maybe because they read that in the past? Maybe, you know, I was trained as a reading recovery teacher, but I'm not implementing those strategies because I moved past that because at that time, those were the practices that we were learning about in school, and those were the practices. But I'm not implementing those strategies. I'm not holding on to that. I'm teaching through the science of reading. I've been letters-trained. I've been OG-trained. I've, you know, so we learn and we grow. There might be some people that are still back there, but not seriously. And I think that's also important, you know, this is a comprehensive reading program. So we are not just teaching structured literacy. We are teaching components, including comprehension. So there are components of balanced literacy. You may have balanced literacy over here, you have structured literacy over here. We are doing components that are good. We are doing independent reading with our students that can read, our students that are still decoding. We're still, you know, doing small group instruction with them. But I think that's what's important. We serve a wide range of students, and we have to differentiate for the students. So, you know, we don't want to lose our D critical thinking lens. We don't want to lose our inquiry-based intelligence. That comes with ARC. So we are doing all of those things while ensuring that we are giving, you know, the best that our students can utilize these tools through.
When we talk about, because I know there's been a lot of conversations about methodologies, and it's not really our role at the board level to try to dictate to y'all the right methodologies, but it is our role to hold you accountable to the success of the program. And so what really is that accountability metric? What is the thing that we need to watch to make sure this is working?
Yeah, so I think you need to look at our standardized test scores. I know, and all of our wonderful teachers, I will just say that, you know, Ms. Martez, the reason that, you know, she wasn't able to attend, but we want to take her from her, she was one of our top performing teachers. 100% of her math students met their growth target this mid-year, and 94% of her students met their growth target for reading this year. So, you know, I think that's so important. We got some good data on ERLA today, which was the first time I've seen it, so it's not even published yet, but we have seen some really good growth. Do you remember that off the top of your head? I mean, we literally. We left that meeting, but we just, like, 72% increase in proficiency, and it was like 52 or something like that in August. Yeah. There's definitely been some growth. And I think with ARC, it's a new curriculum, and we adopted all components of ARC. So that's why I keep praising the teachers because they've done exceptionally well in adopting all the components of a brand-new curriculum. In fourth grade, they only adopted kindergarten and ERLA, fifth, K through five.
So the metric that particularly concerned me was when we saw that when students came in, white and black students in kindergarten actually performed pretty close to each other, and then there was an enormous drop going into First Grade in terms of that gap. Is that something we should watch and to make sure that that close? Because I understand that this is progressive and it builds on, but is that, so if we're watching that, is that something we need to expect in this next year? That gap starts to close? Or is that, okay, so I just wanted to hear y'all say that, right? So that we are going to be watching that year to year, that gap close because of the program that we're implementing?
Absolutely. So, I mean, not, and not just between black and white students, but our gifted students performing, or our special ed education students. So we want to, that's what we've been talking about because we have the growth goal. And the reason that the actual achievement goal was pulled out because the bar was so low. We're a high-performing district. And so I remember at one point, our district goal was 80% of our students will read at or above grade level, and 83% of our students, that's when it was beginning of the year, were at or above grade level. So we have to set an appropriate goal, so that goal needs to be across all subgroups. So not just in general, but across all student groups or subgroups, are our students achieving? Are we seeing 80% of our students achieving at or above grade level? And so we need to figure out what our baseline measure is because I'm concerned that, you know, have things recalibrated because they're so good. So once we get our end-of-year math results and GMAT results, we'll be able to set this achievement goal going forward. And absolutely, you should see this gap closing as a result of the work that we're doing.
Question. First one really hinted at it, which is, I think this speaks to training, and I love the, you know, training in foundations, the letters, the OGs available. So exactly what is available to teachers? What is mandatory? And then what can the communities and schools do to make sure that their teachers? Having gone through teacher education and showing up and taught ninth-grade English, and then been like, oh my God, I'm underprepared, and then gone through a few OG classes, not certified, but a few, was eye-opening. And I think that, I heard a little bit of that in your talk. What are we requiring of teachers, and then what is available, and then how do we let them?
Yeah, so, well, thank you for asking that. So that is something we have actually been working on and grappling with because there are some really good programs and partnerships out there that require for all teachers. We would love our number one, we would love to require letters for all teachers, but that is like a massive level program for two years. And so that would require a significant amount of money to be able to pay them outside of the classroom in addition to the substitutes that would be required for. Anyway, we have talked to districts that are trying to do it district-wide. We've had, there are some states that have worked with the teacher unions to do it district-wide. I don't, that's just not feasible at this moment. So we have been looking at what is the best to require, the best training to require all of our teachers to gain some, you know, foundational proficiency in the science of reading and OG. So the one other thing I wanted to address about ARC is, to my knowledge, the concerns have not come from what is happening in our classrooms. It has come from the product itself. So I think, you know, a product, they're good quality material, and we've gotten lots of positive feedback about the diversity of characters, the diversity of tests and all of that. It's the training of our teachers to be able to utilize the programs effectively for our students that's so important. And you see, they're doing, many of our teachers are doing that master's degrees. So how do we get all of our teachers to do it? That is what we have been working on. What is the best thing we can provide to our teachers next year that we can say, this is the answer. So we are offering everyone this to get there. Now, teachers who are masterful and have the 70 hours, they probably don't need that, so they can say, I've already done it. Anyway, so we are working on that. I got a grant, I think you guys are aware, the $60,000 from the state and the $60,000, that is the plan. We give all of our teachers a at least minimal, I don't want to say minimal level, but an introductory level training in the science of reading and Orton-Gillingham strategy so that they understand how to implement those. With the hope that they will want to go deeper. We will continue to offer letters training to the cohort that's willing to do that, and we will continue to offer the Orton-Gillingham 70-hour training and then the additional opportunity to be, like, what are you, associates? Working on, so many different fellows and associates and whatever. Yeah, so we will continue to offer those. That is a 100-hour practice session that she is doing outside of her job with a student. So we will continue to offer all the things, but what, but my concern as well, we're getting, you know, some of our teachers are very highly trained, and then some have not been able to engage in these things outside. So what is it that we can ask all teachers to do?
I want to add, Dr. Bean, to this discussion is that this is adding the assistant principals of the lower elementary schools, even though some of them are small, was very important because now our instructional coaches focus on the work of an instructional coach, which is supporting teachers that may still be relying on some of those old strategies that are outdated, so they can model, they can train, they can support the teachers to move forward in those. Because our instructional coaches have been pulled to do AP work. They've been doing testing. They've been doing all the things. We've got two amazing instructional coaches back there, and they can tell you. Having an AP in the building, Carla, you don't have one, but. Like, having that AP in the building allows them to focus on the work of the coach, and it allows the principal to provide that overall direction and support for the coach and the follow-up so that that work can be done at each of our schools.
How close are we to an introductory OG level for K through two instructional coaches?
It will be, it will, it will be, we should have some, no, we will have something announced to the teachers by the end of May as to what to expect for next year. Again, it will be what we're, the ones that we're looking at are self-paced with some in-person support that they can complete, I would say, by December.
Second, and I apologize, this is out of nowhere, but having Profit here, something. I think we're doing great stuff. I love how far we've come in three years, this thing, et cetera. But it would all be silly if we didn't think that we're not still failing certain students or missing it out, and as parents. What should they do if the instruction isn't working? What would, as administrators, your suggestion be, step one? Where should they go? What should they do? How should they go? Other than post on Facebook?
I would say reach out to their principals first. The principal is, if the teacher is not addressing those concerns, their next step is to talk to their school principal. And then if the principal's not addressing it, then they can take it up with Dr. Bean. If Dr. Bean wouldn't address it, which she's really good about responding to emails, then I would take it up. But I think all of our principals understand the importance of supporting our students where they are and helping them get to the next level, and are ready to help that work happen.
I think there's also been community education on that. Being that we're a public school, we have to follow guidelines. We have had students traditionally over-served in certain programs, like special education and intervention programs. And so there are lots of laws and parameters around, you know, being put in programs. We should be able to meet the needs of at least eight percent of our students with strong. And so I think we need to, if that is not working, we need to shore up. And that's what's been happening. But that's why we have been working diligently to shore up our Tier One instruction to make sure all of our teachers are trained, understand how to differentiate, and meet the needs of our high-performing students and our struggling readers. So that's where we've been working. We still have, you know, our intervention program. We have those up. We have all of our other programs, but we have to follow the guidelines. Like, we have to follow the boards. There have to be certain levels of performance. So not meeting a student's potential is different from not performing at grade level. And the, you know, the bars to receiving intervention programs in the school are very, very different than asking for differentiation in the classroom. And so, of course, we have to follow state and federal guidelines as far as the students that, you know, are admitted to a program. But I just want families to understand that you don't have to be in a special program to have your child's disability. Even if they, you know, have a disability, but they're still performing at or above grade level, we should be able to. And I've been rambling on, so if anybody else, I know we have a lot more expertise than me in the room. If anybody else would like to.
This report is going to kick to five, but I wanted to share just a little bit about what's happening at Renfro with Read 180, Reading Intervention Program.
Yes, so as we mentioned, that's an area that, so things that are happening at Renfro are amazing. So Dr. Bolton and the crew over there are doing amazing things with Read 180, and they're getting some really good results. That is a reading platform, if you will, a program that has shown great success. We're also using it with Grade Nine students, and we do have a reading intervention at the high school. Lena is Dr. Hamilton, and she is seeing some really amazing results as well. But we do have students that are not reading on grade level at Renfro and Decatur High School. And that does pose a special level of concern because, you know, as a former secondary teacher, secondary teachers, we're not trained in any of these things. And we're still, and we're still not. So we have sent emails, I believe, this week to offer OG training to our secondary teachers to try to get teachers. Exactly. So we have, like Dr. Bean said, the 70 hours we're offering in July, and then again in the fall. And this year, we're opening the door to secondary teachers. I mean, this has been awesome. There's a lot of interest. We've had Paris join us. We have one of our custodians, who's a certified teacher, at the line. And we are, you know, we are open to, we just, you know, the requirement is how is this going to impact our kids? So if they can tell us that, then we are all in to welcome them. So secondary is an area, we've had some conversations about that this week, as a matter of fact. Like, we want, you know, we want to do some reading interventions this summer. What can we provide to students that might be meaningful to help to see that?
Just a point of clarification, just so that folks understand. All teachers in K-5 grades are not OG-trained. They're not required to be. So can you clarify for folks so that they understand variability? What are all K-5 teachers, what can they expect in terms of the schools that they have in their school life? Obviously, all kids get foundations, so they know how to. So what other things?
Well, and I think that's important. I don't think we need, that is an important piece because all teachers in the district, last year, we had monthly, was it monthly? We had monthly foundations training and support for teachers, and that is a multisensory OG approach program. So all teachers that were with us last year did have that monthly training, so they are well-trained in that. The teachers that were with us, as Julie mentioned, in. The teachers that were with us, as Julie mentioned, in 2017 to 19, worked with REEF. And so that was an O G-based training as well. So that was kindergarten and first grade, was that consistent? Okay, yep. So all the teachers that were with us then have had that training. So we do have that layer. And then the training that we've been offered, the C D trains that we've been offering these last two years are optional because it's outside of school time, so it can't be required. All teachers have had, well, then the, the American Reading Company training. And that's what we've been talking about, how do we go deeper with their Erola training? Which is that small group phonics instruction. So we want to make sure we're doing that in addition to our in-RE based units. And so, like I said, we have been, we have, we have narrowed it down to two partners. I would have loved to have been able to announce it tonight, but we have narrowed our, our partnership for training to all teachers. And again, that, that basic level of proficiency for, for dealing, you know, understanding the strategies. And that will be happening next year. So that will be the expectation for all K-5 teachers that have not already received the 70 hours of the
And that's what you said should be done by December. So you think by December, all K-5 teachers will have a foundation in O G?
A foundational understanding. I don't want to minimize the amount of training and work to become, you know, a practitioner in that. But yes, to understand, to be able to layer that on. Julie has done some great work with layering that into foundations. Because one of the, one of the things we hear from our teachers is that foundation moves a little slow and that we can even go deeper with many of our students. And so kind of weaving in those strategies as, but you have to be proficient and, you know, have that level of understanding to be able to do that. And so I don't think with the introductory course they'll be at that level of proficiency, but we are going to continue to provide training. So I think, you know, there was a question like, when will this be done? In education, we are never done. We are never, ever done. But we are always striving to be better. And so, you know, I think we can say that every teacher will have a, a basic proficiency, a level one training by December, but we can't say that it will be done in any one year.
I know we have robust Yeah, so I just want to thank the partners, the process, Dr. Hartwick, and Ms. Marquez for the video, and Ms. Simon for just a very informative piece of data and your supporters. And that's a long day for you all, so thank you all for sharing that with us.
Yes, thank you all. Great job. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Right, so our next topic on the agenda this evening is the renaming of Renfro process. I just wanted to summarize for those listening in and for the board. Back in October, we updated the school naming policy to say that all of our schools that have students will be named after neighborhoods, streets, other names other than after people. We did send a survey out to stakeholders to gather options, and I'll share the data with you here momentarily. Our S B L T meeting last week was a group, all of our parents and, and the principals came together, reviewed the options and are putting forth three options for the board to consider. Naming facilities is in honor of the board. So tonight, we're going to have a discussion and I'll share kind of some of their rationale for these and that the board can discuss and ask any follow-up questions or just engage in discussion as a board. And then the vote will be on May 10th for what name we will actually pick. And then we will start doing our, we've got a rebranding punch list and we will start moving through that punch list as soon as the board takes the vote. So let me share with the board, these were the summary of the names. Let me make this bigger for you, this is probably hard to see. Okay, so lots and lots and lots, some of these are kind of duplicates, but lots of, lots of nominations for Decatur Middle School came in. Some other small grouping, Beacon Hill, I would say is probably the second most nominated name for, for, to rename Renfro. And then there were some other various names in there that I thought, you know, were, were nice. So they did select three. They selected Beacon Hill Middle School and they listed some of their pros and cons. And they felt that it preserves the legacy and the history of the community. It has strong community support. They feel that it would be better than just Beacon. It's not neighborhood specific because it, Renfro is actually in the, the math neighborhood. But it also goes well, goes well with Bulldogs. Some of the cons that they felt, like it's maybe a little wordy, the four names can be challenging. Then they also opted to provide Beacon Middle School and agreed some of the same rationale for the pros on that. And they liked the double, I like this too, the double meaning Beacon. I just think that's really kind of a cool double name there. The school was once named Beacon Elementary in our community. And the cons is maybe not as recognizable as Beacon Hill. The third name that they are putting forward to the board for consideration is Trinity Middle School. They feel like this also preserves legacy and history in the community, honors the students of Trinity that are still living. The, what, this building used to be Trinity High School. And that it's not neighborhood specific. Some of the cons, this possible connection to Christianity, the whole Trinity, and that it, there could be some for discussion.
Do you mind going back up to the pie chart?
No, I don't.
Before I talk about preferences or anything, I do just want to say, I'm absolutely tickled, ticked by the three options that we have. I think it's great that this is the option. So I'm really pleased.
I, I like them all. I, I agree. I think I like that, that, that was, those were the last two that were chosen. For, I'm actually leaning a little bit more towards Trinity for the middle school and only because if we're looking at potential E C L C. I just want to keep the option open of that being Beacon Hill from his childhood. So good to know, that would be the only reason, unless we have another name that we're leaning towards for E C L C, then I think Beacon Bulldogs would be pretty cool as well. So that would be nice. But I would want to keep that one open for E C L C, so I'll kind of include that in our conversation.
I like, I like Beacon Hill because although Renfro does currently doesn't sit saying, Renfro doesn't sit in Beacon Hill proper. But there are no schools left in the Beacon Hill community. All of those schools were closed. And so it would be a way to honor that community and, and Beacon Hill is the name of that community. And so, you know, I like the idea of preserving the history of that community through renaming Renfro that. There was a Beacon School previously and Trinity was named after the street Trinity. And so, you know, I, I just prefer Beacon Hill because currently, most of our schools, our, most of the elementary schools are named after communities, like it's with the Central Valley. But our tradition has been, to now that they have been named after communities.
I think, I think Beacon Hill, those middle schools stand out. I think some of where this grew out of was the understanding how we got to this point. And I think it would be a notable exercise for our students to understand why, why this name has been chosen in the root of the community. So kind of like Janet said, most of the schools are named after their community, but this is, this is one with particularly special story that I think our middle school at the front door of that middle school, they need to realize how the community was shaped. That used to be Decatur, Decatur did not always look and feel and smell and walk and talk the way that it does now. And so I think understanding that story is important for all of our students regardless of how long they've lived here, their race, their color, their gender, all those things. We all need to understand that. So I think this is a notable first step. I think it's a, I think it's also important for all of the, the folks that have been invested in our community from generations back that are still here to help grow, grow the community to what it is now. I think this is the right
I strongly lean towards Beacon Hill. I mean, I, I definitely submitted that name as well, so one of those percentages is mine. And to, exactly to Carmen's point, I think Beacon or Trinity alone don't quite reflect the magnitude of that particular community. Trinity closer than Beacon. But Beacon Hill really requires a reckoning around understanding where that name is. It is important to, to recognize. Trinity, I'm just in the nature of being as diverse and open as possible. I worry about Muslim or Jewish students that don't have a connection to that. And so that name, I, I recognize there is also a historical component to it and, and maybe that gets reserved for E C L C. That's a possibility. But yeah, I strongly lean towards Beacon.
Because does Trinity, will Trinity, does Trinity run in front of that piece of land?
It used, did it used to cut through or was that?
They don't have to, you never know.
Regarding connections as well, I mean, Beacon Hill Middle School would be adjacent to Beacon Hill. I'm shouting to everybody. Would be adjacent to, to the old Beacon Hill or to the current Beacon Hill neighborhood. I, I just wanted to point out that, like Claremont Elementary isn't on Claremont Road either, right? I mean, I mean, so it is, it isn't, it always is exactly on the street or adjacent. It can be proximate. And so I think that
I just want to let the community know that we're not taking the vote, we can't take the vote in the public meetings. We're just having a discussion about these different things.
Yeah, Beacon I liked your argument for Trinity, but the compelling part was that we would then name another school Beacon. I think the opportunity for something that may not happen. I, my gut was Beacon, not to speak openly, like Beacon Middle School. I didn't like the double meaning, it is not in Beacon Hill. Why the name Beacon? Beacon for academic excellence, we are doing something. But to be honest, speaking of middle school, I'm going to call, where you go to school, I go to Beacon. Like that, that's going to be the monument, the stature of it, just like all of these four names, schools take on the first name. When they happen, Beacon Hill has been correct title. We, we're picking hairs there outside of Beacon Hill Middle School. I go to Decatur. I go to, you know, Renfro, I go to Beacon. Excited about Beacon Hill. I mean, I mean, one of the things I was excited about renaming it is that you're, and kind of like the boringness of naming it after is that school, if it has a name, it should carry a history that you want to tell your students about. And is it Renfro or not? It wasn't a class that enjoyed history, but let's talk about this. That's pretty cool. So I'm all in. Beacon Hill by, great.
That and Karen, I think you and I will have conversations about how to frame this for the, the board meeting in May so that we can put it forward for her. I think I understand where we're headed. Okay. Next item on the agenda, the board members, we've been doing our study. So thank you for indulging me in my instructional prowess. I always like having an anchor text as we move forward and have some big work in front of us of the school system, strategic planning and our board policy update. And I think this book will really serve as a good foundation for those discussions as we move forward. So I came up with a question that I thought would be a good first question for the board to enter in a discussion and I'll be participating as well. So the quote that I kind of pulled out of here was that from Nagata, he says, school boards and superintendents are partners. They're not equal partners. So curious until, have a discussion as a board and, I mean, I think let's keep this to, you know, 10 minutes or less and then we'll dig into the next section. So what does Nagata say about the partnership between the board?
The distinction between governance and management. And so, you know, the board governs and the superintendent manages. But in, it was that governance always trumped management. And so I think that's where the, you know, the clarification of why they are not equal partners. That was my
I hope this is all right.
Yes.
It is here. But you guys here simply put governance is steering and management is probably. So I think, I, I thought that was the, I think, the terrifying, especially for Karen. That's the policy, he said.
I agree. That was one that's where we learned well, how to really, how to learn the applying. So that's trying to base that. So a strong board wants shine, you know, every day, not give shine. So I like that, this is just a reminder. That was one question.
And by first, right, I thought it was a very interesting conversation around overempowering superintendents or superintendents that actually do engage at a governance level as well and sometimes even seek that out as a role, how that can also be very damaging. So that's, that's an interesting interview.
Eleven, kind of middle of that first paragraph, you talked about the democratic power of the board. And I guess I really like how he centers the power of the board back to the opposition. How they are really speaking for the people, speaking in that conversation. So I always, you know, a big proponent of public education being the champion of democracy. I just love that he put it in that. And also love that he always brought it back to children and doing what's best for our kids.
Sure. A lot of times, the board members, how, how last year, maybe have some here and have a superintendent. So that's kind of the importance of the board having ten, fifteen year specific they know they just want to be superintendent.
Even if we aren't, the importance of strategy and policy and things like that, as you said, we don't want that. You can't have that swapped out every couple of years. Like that continuity is, is critical to the, to the kids.
Well, what was this a sense to me are, as I'm from Chicago and I forgot that, you know, how their board is appointed. And, and he talked about how, you know, he seems to support that bottom of government. And that, you know, to the sort of, I was like a radical reform type of board. And so I'm, I'm anxious to continue reading to see how we will be able to apply these And so I'm, I'm anxious to continue reading to see how we will be able to apply these things. Knowing that we don't have that type of model. Where, you know, superintendent or what our appointment. Is the reason, um, for why he takes those types of, um, out of work best. So that, you know, for Michael Madison to present, um, other emphasis to. Looking for. From those report type models.
So you're a time entity.
I, to be, I read it on Saturday and all I can think about is outside of the Lindes, Decatur with all the going on. Like, you know, I, I checked the date a few times. You know, this book is from '06 and I think it was like on page four where he says. After No Child Left Behind, in the next 10 years, I suspect we're going to have far more people pushing school boards and high performing urban schools for improvement. I'm like, oh, you undercall that. Like in Decatur, we, it, I've yet to meet a person who runs a school board or president of a school board. We don't share a role.
I looked at the, I looked at the day also, um, when I read that sentence. The other thing that stood out to me, um. That, um. You know, the strategy to appoint non-traditional superintendents with strong executive backgrounds and business of the military. And so I know that, you know, for some charter schools, that is the model that they look for. This background and being a teacher, I lean towards having someone that has a, um, act of background as an assistant. And because it feels like we've been a little bit of a disconnect there. Um, and so that's, you know, that's interesting to me. You know, why it feels like that, that works so well. And then I was connecting that to be referenced how just what people read is still going several things, including the carbon model, which I know is this type model. And so I'm, I'm anxious to, you know, to read and see, you know, where that may come from.
So for the next, let's read chapter two for the Bay. Hey. Talk about it then. Right. All right. So let's jump into the update on where we are with the briefing. So again. I'll try to talk loud.
So, um, getting the board just and the public and everyone who wants the names and we will, we are recording this, correct?
Correct.
Yes. We will share some updates in the Friday follow-up. So I want to give an overview on where we've been, where we are and where we're going. And I want to start with talking about the phase. Changes in the grading procedures protocol and potentially our grading scale. So we started in the research process and that was identifying our why, what are best practices? And even coming up with what are some options for what we need to embrace going forward. After finishing the design phase or the research phase, we'll move into the design phase. And that is really, okay, here's these preferred solutions. What is our model to deploy, implement those solutions? What are the things that have to happen? Then we'll have to talk about investment. So how are we going to invest time, resources, if there's additional staffing needed to implement changes and make sure that we can do things with high fidelity? Then we'll jump into implementation. We'll put the plan into action. We'll say, okay, here's what we said we were going to do. Here's the resources we have in place and we will implement. And then we will, well, complete, but you see there's errors, so it never really ends. We'll be monitoring and collecting data and I'll talk about what mon, data we're going to monitor and collect. So we are. So right now we are still in the research phase, which is identifying our why, talking about best practice and coming up with some options. So where we've been, we first worked on identifying the why. So I think there's a couple of things that we can all agree on, on what is grading, best practice and what's good for our students. And first of all, grades have to be meaningful. We have to have grades that can get meaning for students, meaning for their parents, meaning for the system administrators as we monitor progress. Um, and grades should be communicating achievement and only achievement. Grades should not be used to communicate how well behaved a child is, how many times they've attended class, how much work they've turned in or how much, um, effort they're putting in class. That's not the intention of grades. Grades are strictly there to communicate achievement. Um, we also want grades, they really should help our students have information so that they can self-evaluate and grow. We really want to make sure our students understand regardless of what grading scale is used. I'm getting a three, what do I need to do to get a four? If I'm at a 90%, what do I need to do to get a 95%? That's the kind of self-evaluation that grades should help communicate to students. And it should encourage that growth mindset for our students. And it should encourage students to move towards progress in their academic achievement. Grades should also be easily understood by parents and by students. And we also believe that grades should be easily accessible to the parents, to the students and to the staff. So that was kind of where we started off with our why. And this why started building back in 2018 when we did our equity audit, building the Equity Action Plan and developing a timeline way back then in 2018 about looking forward, about looking and reviewing grading practices and policies and procedures. So the other thing about the why is we've been looking at what are the current practices in city schools of Decatur? How are we grading? What are our teachers doing to communicate grades? Are they clear? Are they easily understood? Do they help students look at and, um, want to continue to grow? Do students understand the difference between a five and a six? Can they clearly articulate, here's what I need to do to get a six on this assignment? So I've put a couple of links in here and the one I shared with the board, which I think is very telling is. This is one, something that we've mentioned previously. So this is reading data that we've gathered from about 50 students at the high school. We're trying to identify students that need to participate in a reading remediation plan this summer. What you can see is we've got students in various grade levels. We've got their reading percentile on their most recent, um, reading assessment. Unless, if it was not March, we've given the, the month that the last reading assessment was given. Plus then that also gives their reading grade level. So we've got a percentile and we've got a reading level. So we've also included what is their grade that was shown on their 30-week ELA class. So these kids are in diploma level or middle years program level English Language Arts classes. Um, and what's alarming is that we have students in 10th grade, reading on a 7th grade level, getting a six. High scores of seven. How is a student that is that far academically behind in the area of reading, exceeding so high on a course that is supposed to be very rich? So there just doesn't seem to be a match in what we're seeing. And this data is available for anyone when they click on the link. This is out there stripped of identification and it just shows us there's some mismatch. There's something missing with how we're grading versus how our students are achieving. Another thing, um, that I think is, is pertinent is the intended purpose of the IB rubric. So this is just an example and I'll refer to this assessment again later in the presentation. This is an example of one of the IB rubrics in middle school. And it's for math and it is the criterion description. I think this is for communication. So this is the IB rubric that the teachers have used to assess a math problem. This is a common assessment used in a math class. And what you'll see here is it gives these grade bands, a one, two, a three, four, a five, six, seven, eight. But the teacher has to assign a one or a two. But even though the rubric is not set up to differentiate between a one or a two, the teacher has to decide what is a one or a two. The other piece to note here is that this rubric doesn't embed the Georgia Standards of Excellence. This is strictly made to develop, to assess students' progress on the IB criterion, which are a completely different set of. They're great and we want to continue using those, but we need to find a way to make sure that we are assessing progress on the Georgia standards in a way that's appropriate to inform instruction for our teachers. I'll come back to that a little later. So just to give you an example of what it could look like, this is an example of what, if you take those IB rubrics and imagine this is a one, two, three, four, ignore the one, two, three, four. It could be whatever number is decided. If this then takes, here's the Georgia Standard of Excellence. It takes it in bed in this rubric, the criterion that we want to see students master as related to the standard. So that when the student is completing the problem, now the teacher can say, not only are they communicating at a high level of, with the IB criteria, they also master the content standard that is required to do this work. The other issue we've talked about or identified as an area that needs improvement is we have multiple reporting platforms. So we use Manage Back for grades six through 12, but then we have to import those grades into Infinite Campus to export them to the state and issue report cards for transcripts when students leave us and go to the other districts. And then our pay through five schools don't actually have a grade book that they use and monitor and keep up with daily. They enter those grades in at key marking periods and that's when the parents can see the progress other than let's say Friday folders that our students bring home to show their mastery of work or other grade reports that the teachers may print and send out. One of the other issues that we've identified is conversion of grades. And what this shows you is, so because we don't, because we use the one to seven, we have to assign grades. So we've assigned, let's just say a seven, the equal to an A plus. But there's a scale here of 97 to 100. Why is this, so what happens? It is 97 or is it a 100 or is it a 99 or is it a 98? Someone goes in and puts in a grade, a number to assign to make that seven. We cannot find a clear way that that number is translated. So some kids are getting 97, for the most part it's 97 and a couple get 100. We've not been able to clarify that. So that's the question we need to find an answer to. Also more frequent feedback, uh, needed for our students. One of the issues that the students shared continuously through the feedback sessions that we did in August or October, November was that they turn an assignment and they don't see that assignment for four to six weeks. And then they've already almost finished a whole nother unit of instruction before they've had any feedback on how they've done. So that's another issue. If we're going to give grades that have meaning for students, they need to be given back to them in a timely manner so that our students can think, oh, I didn't get to a five, but if I do this, this and this, maybe I can get a five on my next assignment. If we're not giving them that feedback in a timely manner, they're never able to improve. And then just confusion on the current grading practices. There's four rubrics, they're a one to eight, but then our grading scale on report cards is actually a one to seven at the middle in the high school. How does that translate? But then diploma is only a one to seven. So there's all of these different formulas and translations and we just need to make sure that whatever criteria we're using, whatever scale we use, that it is 100% clear and it is easily understood by all parties and all stakeholders involved. So continuing in the research phase, so one of my goals as a superintendent was to help to build these, to build a data culture. We are at the finalizing, finalizing stages of that. I have done multiple opportunities to gather input, to engage stakeholders and to build this process. It will be presented to the board at the May board meeting for additional rounds of just sharing with the public. Where are we on this? Are we missing something? Is there something else we should consider to edit these documents for the final time before we put them into practice for next year? So I've listed here some of the, um, things that we're going to accomplish as we move through building this data culture. As I was doing the work to build the data culture, we decided that we did need to really focus in on grading because grading is the most important thing that I think our teachers do on a daily basis. That feedback to the student is that's the grade. The grade is, I've assessed how you are, you're at this level, whether it's a five, seven, a 10, a 90 or 100. And here's what that means about your progress and your mastery on this content so that you can move forward in your academic success. I really wanted teachers to be the driving force behind this because they know the grades. They know their content, they know the students. They are at the core of our instructional framework. So that's why it was important to start with a panel of expert teachers. We also gathered in, input from students and parents and I'm going to share the dates of when that happened. So we met twice with the student advisory team. I met with them in October, gathered feedback. Dr. Bean. In November, had gathered additional rounds of feedback and we've got those feedback linked in the presentation. We also met with SCLT, we gave them a survey. We issued that survey and we brought that back and shared those survey results with SCLT. We've also assessed current processes and practices. We wanted this group to really understand what is the current context of grading within city schools of Decatur? What are we doing, what are we doing well and what do we need to do to improve? And looking for what their recommendations would be. And this team also deepened their expertise on best practice. They read books, they read articles, um, they entered in conversations, they researched what other school districts were doing. So they were building their expertise to come up with draft of recommendations that are our starting point that we can use to move into deeper stakeholder discussion and input so that we can be ready to move into the design phase. Continuing with where we've been, so this is more of a, an outline by month of what has been happening in the research phase. So back, way back in October, Dr. Bean gave a presentation to the board. She gave an overview of the grading and equity task force, what they were doing, how they were going to do the work and what they were going to accomplish. Also the student advisory team meetings in October and the SCLT meeting in October. Then in November, additional follow-up with our student advisory teams and their feedback is listed here. Continuing in the research phase, um, admin council met in January, reviewed some of the initial recommendations and leaning of this advisory team of the, the task force and then gave some feedback for the equity team to then take back and reconsider. Then in February, Dr. Bean presented an update to the board and included an update on the work that we, was being done by the Equity and Grading Task Force. In March, the Equity and Grading Task Force met with two, um, focus groups at their school level, invited every staff member to be a participant. They could show up if they wanted to, they didn't have to. I didn't add in here, there were also multiple survey opportunities. In April, Dr. Bean did present additional information to the board about what the work has been doing and some additional data for the board to be aware of. And I want to stress as well, when we say the board, all of this communication that the board gets goes out to the public. We don't have board meetings in private. They are open to the public. We share the link through the recording, you share the minutes. So anyone can access the information that is made available to the board. And that's the purpose of the board is the board's job is to listen, to process, and then we can share, they can share that information and then we also share that information out. Then the Equity and Grading Task Force sent me their final recommendations to consider. And then I communicated with principals what recommendations, um, that I am considering adopting as well as a memo to the board. So that's the research phase. That's where we were. So where are we now? So we are right now in the process of reviewing recommendations to determine if all, some or none of the recommendations are ready to move forward to, to, to the design phase. I've reviewed the recommendations. There are several recommendations that I'm going to kick back and continue to put through the research phase. That is developing a consistent grading scale across grades K through 12 and then also taking another look at our proficiency-based rubric. The proficiency-based rubric, what I'm going to clarify here is that is, do we want to continue to embed our Georgia standards into the IB rubric? Or do we want to create something separate and different? So just to clarify for parents, to the board, to any staff members listening, we will not be having any grading scale changes for the upcoming school year. That is not going to happen. But we are ready to move to the design phase for many other recommendations and I'm going to talk about those on slides 13 through 14. Also wanted to provide some additional rationale. One thing I've always talked about as a superintendent is I'm not going to build the plane while I fly it. Because I've said, if you are building a plane while you fly it, you may build a plane and realize you needed a canoe. I'm not going to need a canoe, build a plane and find myself sunk in the water. So the other rationale here is that all teachers need to have a deep understanding of the standards that they are expected to teach. That is at the utmost. of the standards that they are expected to teach, that is at the utmost importance. One of the things that we have found throughout this process is that there is a wide variation of how much our teachers actually do know and can implement about the standards that they're teaching as related to the Georgia standards of excellence. We have seen some teachers are knocking it out of the park, everything is aligned, it's great, they're rocking and rolling, there are other teachers who are way far out in left field. They're teaching units of biology in an earth science class. That's not appropriate. We need to address that before we can even touch what a grading scale will look like. The other thing that, as I was realizing and looking through the recommendations, is we needed to make sure all the technical fixes were in place before we make any kind of change to grading. There are so many other things that I mentioned as we looked back on the first slide about grading scale, like the 1 to 7, how does that translate? How do we incorporate, and of course, exams into the processes and procedures? How does it come in? How does it come out? There's lots of details behind the scenes, technical fixes, technical work that needs done before we can implement any of those changes. I also want to continue to gather and analyze data on student performance, and then I think we're at a process called disagree and commit. So, that is a step where we know there's disagreement, we heard the disagreement, but now we know there's disagreement, so let's commit to finding a solution together. Whether that's the solution I proposed, or whether it's a solution that the teachers or parents come up with, I just want to do what's best for kids. So, now we move into those items that we are pushing through into the design phase. So, these are things that are solutions, and we'll be designing a model for deployment. So, as we look at the recommendations, there's things that we're going to stop doing. We've been giving zeros, we've been grading effort, we've been using group work as a summative grade, extra credit, and infrequent and inconsistent grade book submissions. Those are things we have to stop, because that's not serving our students. So, we are no longer going to issue effort grades or grade students' academic performance including with effort. Zeros in our grade book, a zero is not an appropriate response. If you have a zero in a grade book, that means you haven't evaluated that student's progress, and as a teacher, you are required to assess their performance on every assignment, whether you have to assess it individually with the student, whether they can do it at home or come in for tutoring, you have to create opportunities to assess student achievement. So, I think the other ones of these speak for themselves. So, also in the design phase, these are some other areas that we are going to move through in design implementation and adoption. So, we are going to incorporate vertical alignment days, we have seen a need for our teachers to come together, and Simon's already mentioned that, hey, we've got our language arts teachers coming together, because they may have been teaching the same novel in 8th grade and 11th grade. We don't need that, we need to create an alignment, we need to know what are the ins and outs at each grade level. During this, we don't need to reteach it in 7th grade, we need to start with the next step. So, we are going to implement those. Also, common assessments by grade level or department, so basically any subject or area where there's more than one teacher teaching that content area, there will be a common assessment developed, and those assessment questions will be linked to the Georgia standards and IB criteria. That's where we're moving forward with that. So, I also mentioned, grading will be linked to mastery of the content standards plus, and the content standards plus is the Georgia standards of excellence, along with culturally relevant teaching, social justice concepts. So, we want to incorporate our core beliefs about equity and how we approach instruction when we assess and teach our standards. We know the standards from Georgia are Eurocentric, we want to make sure that we have done above and beyond to make sure that those standards are open and accessible for all students. Manage Back, we are not going to use Manage Back for general grading, it's not designed for that, it's very, those of you who have had kids in high school, I don't know, you can share anecdotally with parents as they ask questions. And I try to get through Manage Back, and as an expert in understanding grading and content, and I don't understand it, and it's different in every class. It's not the weekend, going from classroom to classroom to classroom, and two 6th grade science teachers, they may have their grade books set up differently, but why that shouldn't be? So, we need to create a more consistent grading process. We still will use Manage Back to issue IB grades, so it does work really well for issuing and assessing and managing all the IB things that we are going to continue to do. We need to make communications with families more user-friendly by providing more information about how we grade, and in particular, we saw the IB rubric, it's a 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. So, what we will do going forward is, if the teacher assigns a student a 3, they need to also tell the student why they didn't get a 4, and what they could do to get a 4. So, why would you give them a 3 instead of a 4? The feedback we got from the students is, they never know, they're not sure. They say, well, I don't know, I never get a 4. And then we also heard from the students, it's impossible to get an 8. Well, why do we have a scale that goes up to 8 if we can never get an 8? So, some of those questions are what we're going to address. Also, summative work will be graded as the final determination for how our students are doing. They will be using formative assessments, but that will be captured in the grade book, but those formative assessments will not be weighted as the final part of the grade. Formative assessments are used to help measure progress towards the end goal. So, we do want to formatively assess our students, and there's many ways that our teachers can do that, but we're not going to weigh that on the grade, because what we want to see is, by the end, they have mastered that map, that high-level information. So, with those concepts that we are moving through to the design phase, we'll continue to move then through invest phase, which is talking about how do we allocate time, training, and resources to support the staff in implementing those. Those are big lifts just in and of themselves, and I believe that we will really see a huge impact on student progress and student achievement, particularly as we can identify areas where we need to shore up instructional support for our teachers when we look at the grades that we see in the grade book. And we'll be implementing those, so this is a small i implementation, because it's not all of the recommendations, it's just parts. So, before summer break, we are going to be continuing to communicate these decisions with our staff, with stakeholders. We'll be collaborating with teachers to review the current IB rubrics and make sure there is alignment and the incorporation of the Georgia standards in those alignments. The example of the math assessment I showed you, was it a great example? It didn't take very long for the teachers to say, here's our assessment, here's the IB criteria, now let's plug in the Georgia standards so that we can now measure those as well. We've got protocols in place, we've got staff support in place, I wish we had more people at Central Office to help enhance the speed of this training, but we only have who we have, so we're working with the principals, with the teachers, on making sure this training's provided, so that our assessments just start to align to the Georgia standards. Also, previewing initial training of this grade book will happen in post-planning. So, in the summer of 2021, Euston will wave his magic wand to continue the Infinite Campus grade book, so that we can jump in and be ready to train teachers with tutorials, with hands-on opportunities, and handouts to make sure they are ready to go. We'll also be updating the student-parent handbook, so that we have, again, clarified any communication or changes in grading processes and procedures. Pre-planning, that's when we will really be rolling up our sleeves and helping our teachers dig into the new grade book, putting the data in, they'll probably have a sandbox grade book where they can play around and see how things work. We have really engaged with Infinite Campus to make sure that they are giving us a tool that is productive. I know we have used Infinite Campus in the past, it was not effective, it was clunky, it was hard to use. The new product that they have is very fine-tuned to what we need and will help us move forward. And then communicating with our parents, here's the new grade book, here's how you access it, here's how you can monitor your child's progress over time, and the students can see it as well.
Can you mean summer?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. That went back in time. Okay, implementation, still small i implementation. In the fall, again, the new grade book will be live, we will be using the current grading scales, so the 1 to 8 for the criterion, the 1 to 7 for report cards in middle school and high school, and the 1 to 4 in K-5. There will be weekly assessments given across the districts that are linked to the Georgia standards of excellence, there will be common assessments that are also linked to the Georgia standards of excellence, and in middle school and high school, if a student earns a 1, 3, 5, or 7, the teacher will be giving feedback to the student on what they need to do to get that upper level of the assessment criteria. We will also be using Manage Back for those IB assessments, there will be two, minimum of two IB report cards issued every year, the staff is going to decide on when they want to do those, because that may tie in with when they do their interdisciplinary units, where they really lean into those IB tasks. The other thing that we will be implementing next year is professional learning community. So, once a month, every teacher will, professional learning community, there's a group of teachers coming together to talk about student data. It will be disaggregated by student group, they'll look at not just achievement data, but behavior data, attendance data, engagement data, any type of data that they are collecting on their students, if they did survey data, they'll take a look at that. They'll write up their minutes, and they will submit those minutes monthly to their principal, and the principals will be sharing those with me monthly when they do their data reports. All right, so let's back up the issues that we are not comfortable moving ahead with from the recommendations, and that's the grading scale and proficiency rubric. So, those are still going to sit there and linger in this research phase while we gather additional information. So, what's that going to look like? So, research phase is deeper study with stakeholders' input and review. So, August through December, we're still flushing out all the details of this with principals, but I've already talked with the high school and middle school principal, and they were 100% on board with leading this process, and feel very comfortable doing that. Well, we don't have any middle school. The old one said he was comfortable, he was probably like, yeah, I'm not here anyway. But actually, the premise here is that every school will do this, even if the lower elementary and upper elementary, they should also take the time to vet and review the 1 to 4 scale that they're currently using and say, can we improve this? Is there an opportunity to make enhancements with the 1 to 4? The principals will be facilitating student-parent, and if appropriate, student-focused groups to review this proposed grading scale. So, I did submit with our, to our teachers, here's what I propose, but there's a lot that needs worked out on it. It is not adopted, it still needs a lot of work, it still needs a lot of attention, and I don't feel comfortable making a unilateral decision for many of the things that have to go along with a 1 to 4 grade point scale. We'll be taking that feedback from the focus group and engaging with our instructional leadership teams at each school, they'll review the feedback, process the input, they'll also be researching if they think they want to keep this grading scale, or they like this idea, research that, let's talk about what is best practice, what does the research say about what's best for grading students' work? They will recommend and present to their SLT, the SLT will review, they'll discuss, and again, these are open meetings for everyone to attend, anyone who wants to come, you don't even have to be a member of C of D, you can be a community member and want to participate and listen into these meetings. Then the principals will submit to me for review and present, we will present these at SCLT for final review and feedback. So, then that will push us into the design and invest phase. So, this is where the board gets involved. So, the board, as you know, we're engaging in policy review. There is a lot that's linked to policy that the board has to agree on and vote into policy. And it doesn't make sense to try to put all these new policies, that's why we're focusing on practices and procedures, not policies. So, there is strategy behind this timing, so that the board has a chance to finish our book study, to look at the different policies that are going to be recommended to us from GSBA, and talk about those. There's going to need to be time for that. And then, so January, February is when we'll introduce, and then in February finalize discussions on a grading scale if we change it, and then the board can vote on that. The main thing the board has to vote on is the passing level. So, whatever grade we choose, whatever grading scale is selected, if it's 1 to 8, 1 to 7, 100, 1 to 100, we have to decide, the board has to vote, here's what passing is if it's here. Passing could be a 70, passing could be a 3, it could be a 4, that's going to be information that will also be kind of built as the high school and middle school go through their process and the elementary schools. So, then also during this time, once we've got a decision, we will enhance our communication toolbox to make sure that we are at the ready to hit send on communications, so parents can see, hey, here's what we're doing, here's the handout, here's the tutorial, here's someone walking you through what this change is going to look like, if there is a change. If there's not a change, I think we need to communicate that as well, like, hey, we decided after this long process to keep this, whatever, the 1 to 8 or the 1 to 4, and here's why we're keeping this. So, then it's March through April, communicating that decision and sharing it with stakeholders. So, that brings us to completion of our cycle, which actually is not really completion, it's like, hey, let's monitor and check and see how we're doing. So, by the fall of 2023, we'll be in that complete phase, which is when I will be monitoring student grades disaggregated by group, and are we making progress towards that? That is where we are with the grading processes. Questions from the board?
Do you want to vote to eliminate the IB program tonight?
It's a work session.
Oh, parents, don't freak out about that.
It's a work session.
I got five hundred and eighty. We were voting to eliminate IB tonight, I just wanted to know when that vote was happening.
Yes, ma'am.
In the communication that went out to parents and the board...
It was on the bus to say that.
After communication that went out last week, you would, you suggested, you proposed that there'd be a 1 to 4 grading scale. But right now, we're saying that that is not definitive.
I'm recommending that that be the adopted grading scale. When that becomes adopted is up in the air. So, I, that would be my recommendation, but what I'm saying is, what I recommend, I think it needs to continue in the research phase, so that other people can make their interpretations, make their recommendations, give me information. I'm not an expert at grading at high school diploma AP calculus. 1 to 4 may not work for them, I want to know what they recommend is the best, is the best scale.
So, there is a possibility that one step in the process where the principals will be engaging, you know, their stakeholders, that scales between the middle school and the high school?
So, I would recommend and strongly work with the team to make sure that we have a consistent grading scale, 6 through 12, because we've got students in NYPD that transition to other programs after they leave NYPD, and that it doesn't make sense to change something in middle school where we know they're all in the same program, they get to high school, they've got to continue that program, and then move into other programs. And even some of our freshmen take college career academy classes, which are not IB, or they're not, they are IB, but they're not middle years program classes. So, I think we need to, my strong recommendation would be 6, 12. I would be okay with a 5, K-5 grading scale and a 6, 12 grading scale, does that make sense? But yeah, I think we need consistency, 6, 12.
And then, and so, I don't, can I just clarify the grading scale for the elementary schools? Are they, did you say they're 1 to 4 right now?
They are 1 to 4 right now.
Okay, okay.
Bunch of questions, then a more serious like?
Okay, just go for it.
How does any of this solve timely submission of grades, which I did think was a little more of an idea that is also isolated in rate equity and all sorts of things?
Accountability. So, our theory of action balance is empowerment and accountability, and if we believe that our teachers are doing the right work, we can trust and monitor, and we can just look, now that we actually will be using a grade book, that I can pull up a report like that and see which teacher hasn't submitted grades in a week or two weeks. I can disaggregate that data by race, I can look at information in a real-time manner, instead of trying to funnel through all the back doors of Manage Back to pull a report. And I don't think you actually can even pull a report in Manage Back, that I've been able to find, to say, hey, how are kids doing in 9th grade list? I have to rely on the teachers to send me that data individually.
Oh, second question, that's great, particularly at that grade, just allows you to do that. Fall 2022?
Yep.
No zeros. How does, will there be a recommendation on how to respond to that, because students are just not responding?
Yeah, so that's still in the design phase, so that part of flushing out all those details is just, we ready to implement starting in the fall.
Does IB grades have to be put in Manage Back? Because is there a way to, if we're going to be going with this new and improved Infinite Campus, is there a way for the IB grades to be put into Infinite Campus or TCU? Because that was always a frustrating experience to having to use these to do.
It doesn't matter to me, we have, I will put my foot down and draw a line in the sand, we are using Infinite Campus, 100%. If there is, people want to be flexible and use Manage Back or not use Manage Back, doesn't, that's fine with me either way, whatever they would prefer. If they don't mind doing 2 grades, I'm okay with that. We do have to report at least twice a year IB grades in middle years programs for the students, so we do have to say, hey, whether it's in Manage Back or whether it's on our official CSD report cards through Infinite Campus, we do have to report progress in every one of the eight NYPD subjects at least twice a year. So, that is a requirement of IB, so we do have to find a way to capture that and manage that data. Diploma programs, they only do their internal assessment grades.
You said, correct me if I'm wrong, all grades have to be, at some point, be converted to the 70 through 100 scale?
High school grades, so nine through 12, we have to convert every single grade to a one to 100 number. Have to be 100%, yes, non-negotiable from the state.
Whether it's originally given on one through seven, or apple through banana, or one through four, or whatever, who does that? Conversion.
Do it. If the teacher is importing grades, the administrator may help them with it.
Is there an academic, like mathematical formula that, you know, said, like for A P Calc, this equals this, put this here, this here, and that's what you use? So kind of like you said, a seven could be, translate to a 97 or it could translate into 100, varies.
I haven't found any more clear explanation than this.
But so then that would mean though, that we could then say it's the median or the average between the thing and just rather than allowing it to be discretionary of a teacher, we would just say a seven is actually a 98.5. A six is 93.5, trying to make sure we're not, right? I mean, but, but since there is no other governing rubric, we actually could put one in place and not be violating anything that would eliminate that, that introduction of potential bias on the teacher's.
I think that needs to be made in open conversation.
Sure, sure.
So just some points of clarification. We are just, so that folks understand, we are not looking at changing the scale in and of itself, what, what parents see from teachers via their students. By next year, right? There are some things here that will go with, which starts the next school year. Some of them I thought were very noteworthy, like the elimination of a zero, not using behavior or attendance to factor into an actual grade itself. I thought that those, I thought that there were, those were huge wins and I feel like we need to make sure that we, that we highlight. Because a lot of the discussion was on the numeric scale itself, whether we're doing one to four, one to eight, or like Jason, apple or banana or whatever. Some things here that I think really highlight or will get at the equity piece, which is what some of the goal was, was here. And behavior and absences, not factoring into grades, I think is a big win. Also the elimination of effort grades, whatever those mean, is also a big win. I know that there's some parents who see that their kids have a seven, but then have a three for effort. So how do you have a three for effort and you've got the highest grade? Well, then that doesn't translate. Timely grades, I think, is also a big win. But I think it's important that, from some of the feedback that we've gotten, that folks realize what this is and then what it is not. And that we're still going to, it will be this time next year before there is any change in the actual numeric scale that their children see. Are you right about that?
If there's a change.
If, if there's a change at all.
If there's a change, yeah.
Yeah, to piggyback on what you're saying, I think parents really understanding how this fits into the equity piece, because I know that was one of the things you pointed out even at the last meeting. How, how is, how is making these changes actually going to fit to improvements in equity? So I think this report that you, that you sent us and then the presentation that you made is pointing that out very distinctly, so I appreciate that. And the other piece kind of goes back to the book a little when you were specific to what the board's role is in this. And so we have the vision, we've provided the vision, the mission statement of how we would like to excel in our schools specifically to equity. That's our job. And what you're doing with your team is then showing, finding that issue, finding the potholes, and then figuring out how we can fix it. That's your job. And so I appreciate that you, you let the community and everyone know where our vote actually happens. It's not that we're not involved, it's not that we don't know what's going on. We are kept abreast of everything. And we're also trusting your team to do what you were hired to do. And so for anyone that thinks that we would be voting on changing the scale or voting on whether there's a zero or not, that is not a vote for us.
No.
That is just us knowing that what we've empowered you to do and there's nothing that you're going to have. So I appreciate you kind of going through where our role is really going to fit and when it will be time for us to vote and that will be itself my point.
I want to highlight the role of our local school leadership team. Our local school leadership teams are a huge component of how we communicate with our communities, of how we communicate with the parents. And, you know, Courtney and I have talked about how do we improve there? And I think even Tasha and I have talked about, you know, how do we improve getting them, like operationalized to do some of this communication and share this information? So that's a strategy I think we need to enhance is empowering our S L Ts to do some of this work at the local school level. Because that's part of their, that's part of their responsibility as a school leadership team member.
Oh, I was just, a couple of things. I wanted to, you know, I want to kind of directly address a couple of the concerns that I've seen come up with the, with the parents. And I have consistently heard across the board, and I think we've all seen this reflected, and I don't think anyone is questioning that we have an equity issue and that there are core problems here that we need to be fixed, right? So I don't, I haven't seen that commentary anywhere, right? And, and I echo exactly what Carmen and Tasha were saying, that there are a ton of recommendations here. The bulk of the recommendations actually that are here that I think are reasonable and the case has been strongly made in support of it. I don't, I don't think there's any question about a lot of that as well. It occurs to me that it feels that the performance rubric, to make sure that I'm, the proficiency rubric, so I'm going to make sure I'm using the right terminology. The proficiency rubric and correcting the proficiency rubric so the students know exactly what the requirements are is more important than the specifics of the scale, right? And I want it to be noted that you're nodding, like everybody, right?
Yes.
And so, so even more than the scale, making sure everybody understands what is required for each movement within the scale is critical. What has not been done, this is a piece of feedback, right? What has not been done is I have not seen in any of the information here a justification for changing the scale itself. That may exist. I'm not saying that it doesn't exist, but I haven't seen that case made in a way that's compelling to change the actual scale itself, right? I get that there are issues, but I think there is a legitimate worry that we're tampering with kind of the core of how the kids have been evaluated up to this point. And there is a non-zero risk that we actually make it worse. And so I, and I, and I'm not at all attributing that that's what anybody would want to do. I'm just saying that be a lot of information brought forward. I'm presuming that you're leaning towards the one to four scale. It's not arbitrary and that you have a lot of rationale behind that. That needs to get brought forward and made in a case that I think everybody can absorb and understand, right? To bring some of the concern down around where we, we don't, I don't think anyone wants to find ourselves in a worse spot. And given that this is, this isn't just a big bite out of an apple. This is like a portrait of apples that we're trying to take a bite out of right now. I think the concern is if we're moving too quickly without having a clear understanding of all those justifications, we actually can end up in a worse spot.
Agreed. And that's why we're leaving the grading scale in and the proficiency rubric in the research phase. There is more to be done. Dr. Bean and I, I'm very aware of. Dr. Bean? And I are very aware of the research. We spend lots of time reading research. I've been reading grading research for, you know, 20 years. But, but yes, more of that needs shares. And I'm open to and listening to what, what's the benefit of the one to eight? Why would we stick with the one to eight? And if that's the decision that's going to be the recommendation that's going to come forward, I want to know that. But I'm also very interested to do and watch next year, when I have the ability to monitor grades over time, is that when we're asking teachers to make a justification between a three and a four, do they automatically move to the four? If we're asking teachers to differentiate between a five and a six, are they always choosing the six because then why did they not choose the five? So I'm very curious to see what happens. And if there is actual gradation and they have a really strong reason for using one, three, five, seven, great, let's use that. If that's helping our students progress and helping our students want to do more and achieve better, I'm all for that. But I'm very curious to monitor that and see what happens over time, when they're going to have to say, hey, if I gave a three, I hope that you could tell Carmen what she could have done to get a four.
You said that there would note what the sort of standard version and the gradation between the one and two have the same thing. Those are both more explain.
I'm much more focused on the proficiency rubrics within those than I am what the score is at the top. I understand that with the lack of clarity about what constitutes a one or a two, some bias force of differentiation can happen. But I feel like that can be fixed without eliminating the one to eight. I mean, so like, there are things that can get fixed in there to make that appropriate without immediately changing the scale. Because if we went ahead and changed the scale, but didn't fix those proficiency rubrics, they actually have made it worse. And I think that's what the parent, I think that's what I'm hearing parents say. It's that changing the scale is an awfully giant step when there are a million small steps that need to be made in the meantime.
But I think Maggie's also, she's saying the same thing. She's saying that the issue is less. More what you're seeing underneath, which is that we are often using I V curricula, kind of I V standards. We're conflating them with Georgia Standards of Excellence. Maybe we're teaching one, both, or neither, and then a grade pops out and then we sit down with you and are testing, there's this alignment. And you can see that from the data that she just presented. So rather than right now today, be focused on what the actual numeric grade is and what it means for college transfer and how we're converting it, we really need to be focusing on what the children are being taught and metabolizing and being able to give back to us in the form of some kind of assessment is kind of what I'm, what I'm understanding.
I think, I think both are an issue though. I think the criteria and description, definitely the important grades, the Georgia standards. But I don't think that we should diminish, I mean, I'm telling you, the subjectivity comes in between what you give a three or four and the, and in the end, we got, they're going to have one grade, right? I mean, the, you know, the grade, there's going to be a grade on the report card and you run the risk, I have never considered a one to four grade. I just put that out there, I just, you know, I'm not familiar with that. But I see the value in it now because have a disconnect between, if they're learning the standard, but then they're, they're getting three versus a four, or five versus a six. So their, their math scores or their G math scores may reflect one thing and their grades reflect another because of bias. And it's not a, you know, that, that bias is not a quick fix in, in terms of the, you know, how you determine whether the three or four or five or six. And so I see value in, in both, in creating the, the criteria with the Georgia performance standards. It's so much easier to have one grade, you know, band, you know, because.
But wouldn't, if I say if we're fixing the proficiency rubric in those bands, it would be defining what constitutes a three or a four, you would not be leaving that arbitrarily up to the teachers. I 100% agree with that, that that shouldn't continue to be arbitrary because that's clearly an opportunity for bias.
So is there going to be a band for one, a band for two, a three, a four?
That would be the question, right? Yeah, exactly, 100%.
Yeah, that's what I want to know. Yeah, right.
For Georgia standards, there's not a four.
You could create, right?
The decader could create, there aren't standards that aren't aligned with the test, which goes back to the thing, or where are we failing students? You're making the standard.
But that's Dana's argument, that that's not really getting at the heart of the matter here, which is that there is a, is a bias in how these grades are created, right? So if we, if we can go through and find, find through the criteria with the hope that, or the, the goal that we are teaching, that we're teaching, what we're supposed to teach and the way that we're supposed to teach it. But in the end, there's a grade on the report card. And if there's room for bias there, even if we could change the scale to whatever we want to change it to, that bias is still going to, it's going to be a one to eight. We can go to zero to 100, seventy to 100, apple and bananas. It could be whatever it wants to be. But if we don't tackle that there are some areas of, that, of grading bias and that is a heavy load, independent of this. And it's going to be what it's going to be. But she, but some of the things that she, that we put in here get at, are getting to that, which is an important point.
And I think the real concern around bias that teachers have with fewer gradations is that if you're at a one or a two possibility and you're putting in, and you're, and you're allowed that level of flexibility of bias, if you downgrade someone into a one, that's way more damaging than if you had a one or a two, between a two to a three, right? Those gradations are allowing less impact of the bias because it's a shorter distance to move. But I, but I think overall, I think the core point is regardless of what the scale is, we have to fix the proficiency rubrics to the level that if you don't have that, you don't have the room for that bias. I feel like I'm shouting.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I just have one quick question that I think has come up. It is, is it possible, I assume that it's possible, to have an I V curriculum, an I V diploma program as we know it now and as it exists and not have a grading system like this? So if we had a traditional, the CAP County grading program, 70 to 100, zero to 100, it's still possible to have I V metrics and an I V system as we have now, that is correct.
One, Carmen's question, for those of you may not have heard her, is can we have an I V diploma program, an I U T middle years program without using the I V grading on our, like our daily grading? Yes, 100%. We are I V because of how we teach, not because of how we grade. We are I V because of our instructional strategies and the pedagogy that we use and how we connect learning using inquiry-based learning. We're not I V because we give a one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. There is no other school system in Georgia, there are many, many I V schools in Georgia, none of them use one to seven as their daily grading.
Important, that is, my joke, whether in Fort Worth. Yes, obviously in Fort Worth. Given, just speak, so we're obviously not trying to eliminate I V. And that's, that's, yeah.
No, no.
There's not, there are no votes in work sessions.
No, there's no votes in work sessions. And there, there's no plan to get rid of I V. It adds so much to our students' educational experience in this field.
My only last concern about the process is that we don't just stick with something because this is what we know and, uh, just hope that everyone will be able to, as we engage with the, with our stakeholders, that everyone will be able to bring something to support their, their case for whatever grading system that they don't want to be.
Something I want to clarify, particularly for the board, if you use my boxes, is that the, the process going through was following this, like, yeah. We gathered input to know what the students, what the parents were looking for in a grading system. We needed to identify best practices, we needed to identify options so that we then could present them to parents and students for that additional feedback. I think had we gotten to finishing up our research phase in December, we possibly could have moved forward faster with looking at a grading scale. It's just not possible at this time of year. And like I said, I'm not comfortable building a plane of that quiet. I want to make sure we have all the tools in place and we are ready to go with a 100% student implementation.
My last question is, given that we just kind of have wrapped or about to wrap the budget process up,
budget process up, this looks like an enormous amount of fairly expensive work. Are we comfortable that we have all the resources in the budget? It's something we need to be thinking about in terms of, because the, the biggest concern is that we drive a lot of these changes, but they don't have the support of the teachers there necessary to make those changes.
Like we do have minimal support. It's going to move slowly because there's just not a lot of school at central office to do work at alternate schools. So you've got to do work at this school this day, support teachers at the next school the next day. That happens slower when you have smaller teams at central office. We added into the budget lots of extra people for Dr. Bean and her team. They could move much more quickly on this process, but we don't. We have, we have, would I love a strategic communication person? Yes, that'd be awesome. We're doing five jobs. She's trying to, we are doing the best we can with what we have. We would always welcome additional staff to help us get the work done. Because we're not doing the work at central office, it's falling on the school personnel. And we try to protect them from managing these processes. So I, I mean, if I was going to make an adjustment to the budget, I would request it. Our bits have really helped with strategic communication. And if I could add, you know, additional coaches at the elementary school and high school, middle school, like I would love a science coach at the district office, a math coach, a language arts coach, a literacy, I mean, to add and support to help our teachers not have to carry that burden.
If there's no other questions, the conference will adjourn the meeting at 8:17.
Can't even go over that.